Stop. I'll come back. We're going to call our second meeting to order, and it's now 7:25 PM. This is the quasi-judicial public hearing on order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Catherine Yaffe.
Here.
Catherine Rissaber.
Here.
Catherine Reed.
Here.
Catherine Moreno.
Here.
Catherine Fuller.
Here.
Catherine Brewer.
Here.
Mary Leonard.
Here.
All present.
Déjà vu here, so... All right. Item number one, please.
Item one, public comment with respect to an application for rezoning of property located in 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive. Lots 35, 36, 37 of block four as a planned unit development. zoning overlay. The applicant, Bay Harbor Hotel LLC, has gone through the review process with staff and the planning and zoning board, where the project was approved subject to town council approval. The application consists of a seven-story building with 99-unit hotel, six floors of hotel rooms with one floor over a common area with a pedestrian promenade.
Okay. All right. Well, first, I guess we're going to hear from the applicant.
Um, first, I'd ask that you swear everyone in. You can't see me behind this huge TV.
Sorry.
I need to swear everyone in, as this is a quasi-judicial hearing. All those who are about to testify, please swear at the end. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth? Oh, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Please start.
Thanks, Matt.
All right.
Good evening, and Happy New Year is appropriate. My name is John Simmons. I represent Bay Harbor Hotel LLC, the owner of the property at 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive. We're pleased to bring to the Town of Bay Harbor Islands the proposed Grand Beach Hotel Bay Harbor. We're seeking your approval for an upscale 99-room hotel with associated parking, which is compatible with the surrounding area and will be a significant addition to the gateway to Bay Harbor Islands and the economic vitality of Kane Concourse. Although we'll be giving a very full presentation of the project, I would like to ask for the opportunity to respond to any questions or comments following the public comment. I'll be the only member of the team to actually make a presentation, but we have a number of our other team members here tonight who can assist in answering questions. We have John Carino, who is our Architect of Record. We have Mario Viera, who is the General Manager of our Construction, Arm, and the Development. Frederick Mark is our Designer and also our Anna's Representative. Sarah Fial of David Plumber and Associates is our Traffic Engineer. Suraj Saba of Section L is our Landscape Architect. Jean-Michel King is the General Manager of our Hotel, Grand Beach Hotel Surfside. We are represented by Aikman LLP through Steve Wernick and Nissen Kazden. Nissen is here tonight to represent them. The conclusion of your staff was that the proposed project should be approved, and it would result in a land use that was already well-established, would be compatible with the existing surrounding land and uses, and would result in a more compatible land use on Kane Concourse. There are no variances required for this project. The project was reviewed by the Development Review Committee on May 20, 2015, and recommended for approval. The project was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board and was recommended for approval on August 4, 2015. Now, there were discussions at the first PCB meeting in July concerning elements of the design, including the most notably the east facade. We listened to the PCB, made changes to the building in a number of areas. On the east facade, we created articulations which were emphasized by the use of architectural elements and planters on the balconies. Based on the improvements presented at the August 4 meeting, the PCB approved the design as presented without any conditions or request of changes. Certain conditions were included during the DRC process, all of which have been met, including the preparation of a third-party traffic study specifically for this project in accordance with the town's criteria. We submitted the traffic study as of May 2015, prepared by David Plumber and Associates, which along with the PUD and site plan applications, supporting documents, and Mr. Miller's staff report of August 24th, are part of the record for tonight's proceedings. The result of the analysis of the traffic study is that the surrounding roads will continue to function within the adopted level of service standards, and that our driveway provides sufficient stacking to prevent queuing outside of the property. We've also complied with the condition to provide a pedestrian promenade on our site. This will enhance the pedestrian environment along Kane Concourse, as well as provide access to the water for the public, and is provided entirely at the cost of the developer. Following the recommendations of staff, the Development Review Committee, the Planning and Zoning Board, we're before you tonight to seek formal approval by the Town Council through two public hearings. I'd like to take some time to talk about our group, the efforts we've gone to in the design of the project, what the hotel will be like, how it will work in practice, and what makes the project viable for us. Although we're part of a larger group, this is very much a family business, and ownership remains deeply connected to all aspects of our hotel operations, and keenly vested in buildings that fit into the surrounding area with only positive impacts. To achieve this, firstly, we design and build the hotels ourselves through our in-house construction team. Secondly, we operate the hotels without flag or third-party management. And thirdly, we use our own cash resources to not only buy the sites but construct the buildings. But most important, we're here for the long term. There's no exit strategy here. The only plan is to operate this hotel for the benefit of ownership and the Town of Bay Harbor Islands, for the current generation, the next generation, and the world beyond. It's our financial position and our long-term view, combined with achieving a certain minimum number of rooms on the site, that ensures the viability of this project to our group. I hope that some of all of you have taken the time to visit our other hotels, working under the same grand beach name, either on Miami Beach or in Surfside, to get a flavor of how we operate the hotels. The key to the success of these hotels is the tasteful, friendly design coupled with our standard room, which at approximately 440 square feet is much larger than the average hotel room in the area. Each room comprises two full bathrooms, a separate sleeping and sitting area with a sleeper sofa, and two large televisions. The rooms appeal to all types, whether they're families, business travelers, singles, couples, friend sharing, they're luxurious, comfortable, inviting, and well-thought-out. In Bay Harbor, you can expect the same level of quality, but with the benefits of the lessons that we've learned since we first designed a hotel in Miami Beach. As part of our efforts to minimize the impact of the project on our surroundings, we've looked at every aspect of the hotel to ensure its compatibility, from the location of the pools to the design of our mechanical equipment, from the amount of landscaping between our property and our northern neighbor, to the practicalities of how this hotel will actually function. We've reached out to our northern neighbors, the Seascapes Club, and presented our project to their board and their residents. We listened to their questions and concerns and made adjustments where possible. Based on our agreement to accommodate a number of reasonable requests, the Seascapes has, I'm pleased to say, agreed to support our project as presented to you this evening. We listened to the comments made by the DRC and the PCB, and accommodated changes to improve upon the product. We've reached out to residents and businesses alike. We've visited all the shop owners in Bay Harbor and received overwhelming support through assigned petition from nearly all of the shops and restaurants on Kane Concourse. We listened to the people who want to see a restaurant and bar open to the public, and equally those who are concerned about noise and traffic generation. We opted for the least impactful choice for both the nearby residents and traffic flows, while also providing the most positive impact to the businesses along Kane Concourse. To be clear, the onsite dining and bar are limited only to the guests of the hotel and are located within the ground floor of the building, so they will not negatively impact the neighborhood. But just to describe the guest experience as they arrive at the hotel. As they approach the hotel, they'll be presented with lush tropical landscape. Landscape is extremely important to us. It was the planting and tranquility of this property that first attracted us to it, and we intend to recreate that feeling. Guests will then enter the car ramp and be greeted by one of our valet staff. From there, they will enter the reception, which is at the same level as the water, and this connection with the water is a very important feature of the design as well. The reception desk sweeps around into a self-service food area, where guests can help themselves to pre-made items or continental breakfast at breakfast time, and there'll also be a waiter on hand to provide drinks or take an order from the menu. The reception, lounge, restaurant, and bar facilities are all combined in one comfortable functional area with a generously sized and well-equipped gym adjacent. From here, guests can easily access the tranquil pool deck or outside lounge, or use one of the three elevators to take them quickly to their suite. All in all, this will feel as upscale as any hotel in the area, while being run with an efficiency that ensures its viability. We've had concerns about scale and traffic generation. These concerns are important to us, but we must focus on the reality and not ignore the facts. So it's important to consider what this 99-room hotel will really mean for the Town of Bay Harbor. Regarding scale, the project is to be built inside the setback lines and the height restrictions set by this town. With the recently increased side setbacks, there is now more than 50 feet between our building and the nearest neighbor, which increases to almost 64 feet from level five and above. Interestingly, the distances between the 10 existing buildings to the north of our property range from just 19 foot 2 to 47 foot 4, with an average of 27 foot 6. To the south, we've provided pedestrian walkway for the benefit of the town, which takes 10 feet out of our property. We are not seeking any variances, and are not looking to build a greater volume than your code allows. On the contrary, the nature of a hotel's design often does not maximize what could be built for code, and that's the case here. The size of the building is in proportion with the neighboring buildings, both current and proposed. Our attention to the design and the landscape further limits the impact of its size. Compatibility is enhanced, as pointed out by your staff, through the inclusion of MIMO elements in the design. And the truth is that this building is going to fit into the town, as though we're always there. The use is entirely compatible and will provide a greater amenity for the town's residents, as well as a boost to its finances and the business community.
Excuse me, Mr. Simmons. Are you able to make your presentation full screen? It's beautiful, and I'd like to be able to see the slide.
No apologies.
Thank you.
As I said, to understand the impact to this hotel, the best way to look at it is to consider a similar operation. Coincidentally, we happen to have one in Surfside. The building that we constructed on the west of Collins Avenue is pretty much the same size as this. And this building has seamlessly become part of everyday life in Surfside without causing adverse impact. As for the traffic at that property, the reality of what we experience in Surfside is less than 20% of the daytime journeys predicted by the traffic report for that property, and less than 15% of the peak hour journeys. This was based on hard data collected during our busiest month to date. We expect the same percentages in Bay Harbor. It doesn't mean that the traffic report for Bay Harbor is wrong. On the contrary, it's entirely correct based on the required criteria. The difference is easily explained, based on a number of factors, not least of all that the report is required to assume 100% occupancy, and that 100% of our guests will bring cars. The reality is that we are expecting 75% occupancy, and as we find in a lot of properties, roughly 43% of our guests arrive by other means of transportation. So combining this with the fact that, one, we don't have the types of facilities that create spikes in traffic, like bars open to the outside, clubs, meeting space, big restaurants, and, two, the peak traffic hours for a hotel are different to an office or a residential building, this adds significantly to the compatibility of this project. What about noise? So as at all of our properties, our sound system plays nothing louder than ambient music. We've placed our swimming pool from the south of the property to limit the impact of any noise that emanates from the pool, and it will be closed from dusk to dawn. We don't have an outside bar, and we've invested considerable time in identifying the most efficient and quiet cooling towers. Their location on the roof will further limit their impact. Finally, we're good operators who care. We do not attract noise violations, and we stand by what we promise. For the best evidence, just look to our existing hotels. Although we're not required to do so, we have also considered the economic benefits to the town by commissioning a third-party report through Andrew Dolcardt of Miami Economic Mr. Dolcardt estimates the assessed value of the property will go from the current $1.856 million to $24 million. The town will receive approximately $117,600 directly in annual ad valour and taxes alone, in addition to other benefits that will find their way back to the town through the various other taxes that are collected, as well as approximately $340,000 in one-time fees during the course of construction. The predicted $530,423 in total ad valour and taxes, $188,727, will go towards Miami Day Public Schools, which will undoubtedly benefit the Ruth K. Board Elementary School. The report also estimates that guests of the hotel will spend $10.5 million on food, beverage, entertainment, and attractions. The multiplier effect takes this to $23.9 million. And if only a fraction of this is captured by the town's businesses, it will have a significant positive impact. We predict a total of 40 employees at the hotel, and we encourage locals to apply for work at our properties, and we hope to become a major local employment generator. In closing, we'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to present our project, as well as the PCB, DRC, and town staff for the work they've put in to get us to this point. We recognize the importance of this site as a gateway to the town, and have spent a significant amount of time responding to comments and fine-tuning the layout and design. This is going to be a high-quality, luxurious hotel offered at an affordable price, which will give a wonderful option to the town's residents for their visitors to stay close by. It's compatible in terms of size, use, impact, and design. We're planning to be in Bay Harbor for many years as your partners, your neighbors, your friends, and as a major contributor to the economic vitality of the town. We look forward to the opportunity to respond to your comments, which follow our presentation, and respectfully request your approval at this first of two public hearings. Thank you.
All right. First, let's get the public comments, so we'll get that. Do we have a question? Okay, we have 1060 LLC. Mrs. Newhat.
Will upzoning this particular gateway property into a 99 hotel room with allowing 21 off-site parking spaces have a favorable effect on the town? This particular property had been categorized as a not-for-profit, and although it has been using town services, has not paid real estate taxes for many years. Therefore, how, if so, was Church by the Sea, a not-for-profit, able to get out of a 99-year lease on this particular property, 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive, that had stipulations of 34 condo hotel rooms? Is the Grand Bay Hotel willing to pay both real estate and resort taxes if approved for a 99-room hotel? Undo or excessive burden on town facilities? There were 21 off-street parking spaces approved that has an expired building permit at this location. Therefore, will this new 99 hotel room being presented have the required number of parking spaces on site? There's no documentation found of paying a deposit for $180,000. That was through attorney Mr. Nissen, that had stated this at the November 2011 public hearing. When a written public records request was made to the town, no documents were found pertaining to these 21 off-street parking spaces. Will the adding an extra 45 hotel rooms, including the 21 off-site parking spaces, be detrimental to the surrounding businesses and to town residents? The town taxpayers every year pay thousands of dollars to specific businesses to lease parking spaces in the adjacent parking lot behind the Palm. By using parking lots that require parking 500 feet, including the Kane Concourse, may possibly cause other businesses to go out of business. In the future, will this large quantity of 99 hotel rooms possibly force taxpayers dollars, over $10 million, to build a new parking garage to suit their needs? Excessive noise or traffic congestion? When this was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board on July 7, 2015, the traffic engineer had stated that the traffic study performed at the levels of service on all regular roads. Well, this is not a regular road, and we had a moratorium for three years on it because it's not a regular gateway property. They did not answer questions concerning the commercial component for the Marina and the restaurant usages. Shoreline Review, the Manatee Preserve, the unsafe bridge located on Kane Concourse, you know, the blue pipe running to the property.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Newhat.
Okay. Just one more. There was a fire regulation there, and also their driveways were not wide enough for access.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Caroline S. Hesse. Caroline?
Yeah.
All right.
It's going to be Caroline.
You're not Caroline.
This is myself, Ellen, Adam, rather, Carolyn.
Oh, she's not coming.
Your owners of Bay Harbor Drugs. I'm a little tired at the end of the day.
Okay, no problem.
No problem. A new owner of Bay Harbor Drugs, been here for about a year and a half.
Can you just say your name and address?
Thanks. Hi, my name is Adam Hesse. We are the new owners of Bay Harbor Drugs. Been there for about a year and a half, seen a lot of traffic come in and out of Bay Harbor. I got it, there's a lot of logistical issues, whether it be parking, whatnot. They should make this happen. Everybody should get together regarding parking issues, if they want to keep it a historic site, whatever it is, you want to keep the money in Bay Harbor. It's good not only for businesses, it's good for the community. I am for good restaurants, and for every type of business that will keep the money in Bay Harbor, keep people in there. Since a year and a half that we've been here, thank God that we had a following from our previous employers, because we have very little business from Bay Harbor. The ones that we do have, we appreciate, we welcome, thank you very much, but Bay Harbor needs to create awareness that it exists. You know, everybody asks, "Where are you located?" "You know where Bell Harbor is?" Yes, okay, so you go down, cross the bridge, Bay Harbor's there. What's there? There's nothing there. That's the problem. I understand people are going to have issues with noise ordinances, whatever it is, we can make it happen. We need to make Bay Harbor realize what it is. It's fantastic. It really is a hidden treasure. It's fantastic. You know, it's good for everybody. It's not just for us, it's good for the homeowners, good for pretty much everybody in the community. Yes, you will have issues, you will have people battling, but you know what? You have to come to some kind of agreement. I heard about the hotel, I said, "This is great, we're going to have more people coming in." I don't have to go and basically through all of Bell Harbor and all the other areas try to promote not only our business but the area. And it's tough, you know, going across, when we first moved into, I know I'm exceeding the timeline here, but when we first moved into the area, they know, Bay Harbor's known as Medical Row. Problem is, most doctors, horrible businessmen. They say, "Ah, we have our clientele, we don't really care." We were, "Yes, we're for you, to do anything you want, that's fine, but you just do all the work." Well, you know, you have to run the business, you can't do all the work. We need everybody to get involved. It is good for the community. It is good for everyone, good for the businesses. And we should make it happen. And thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. All right, next we have Kathleen Kennedy.
Mike?
Yep, you're next.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Kennedy. I'm giving the address, because I own the apartment. One building down from the gentleman here, 9721 East Bay Harbor Drive.
I'm sorry, one thing, you came in late, I don't think you were sworn in, so, Frank?
Oh, yeah, there I am.
We affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Tell it like it is. I do. Thank you, Mr. Mike. 9721 East Bay Harbor Drive, and also 9900 West Bay Harbor Drive, Apartment 5 and 6. I have never seen this gentleman before in my life. And the fact that, in the past, my history is all is hotels. I worked for Merrip and Enterprise, as his Director of Sales and Marketing, and owned hotels in Bay Harbor. But to say that the homeowners cannot go to your bar, I'm Irish, hello, I can go to the cafes, are you serious? This is ridiculous. This is, I'm using like flagship hotels? Really, what's wrong with every community in this area right now, who has the Ritz Carlton, the old flagship, the Four Seasons, and he wants his little private little thing for his private little whatever is going on in that place? And I'm sorry, the traffic jam, I went to Daddy's and I spoke to the people at Daddy's, the new owners. You know what, at 3 o'clock, God bless the school, I'm just like wondering what's going to happen with, and he's telling you all these stories? I've heard them before. I opened up hotels in South Beach, the Blue Room, the West Winter Haven, and the Essex House. And I'm telling you, this is all salesman's talk. And when you don't allow the homeowners to go to your hotel, a hotel is for everybody, and I love this gentleman that was just here, because you know what? This is ridiculous. Flagship hotels is what we need here. We need a Marriott, we need a Hyatt, for this gentleman to say that the unit owners cannot, a homeowner cannot go to his hotel, that it's going to be quiet, and, are you kidding me? This is a resort, this is beautiful. I love what's going on here, I like the condominiums, I keep telling Ron, I see division here. But to make this place all like crumbled up, and it's for certain people only, and nobody's allowed in there, and the noise, and, are you kidding me? Let's have discos out there, let's have karaoke out on the waterways. Are you kidding me? We're young people here, what are we going to offer developers here? A quiet little town where we all lock the doors, and we turn off the lights, and we go to bed? Are you serious, guys? Come on, let's get visionary here. Come on! I mean, this is ridiculous. I couldn't believe what I heard this respectable gentleman saying here, that the homeowners cannot walk in a cup of cappuccino, get a Guinness, whatever. Are you kidding me? It's ridiculous.
All right. Next, we have, oh, is this?
Excuse me, Mr. Mike, I didn't ask you so.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Look.
Oh, it's okay. Is this on the same item? Is this?
Bay Harbor.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Nestor Mina.
Already left.
He already left. Okay, so, we also have, this is Remi Alouche? All right, got it.
Good morning, gentlemen, and everybody, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to talk about this hotel that they were planning to build here, and, as I said before...
Yes, can you say your name and address for the record, sorry?
9110 Bay Drive.
And your?
Remi Alouche, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, I don't see anything wrong about building a hotel over there, renting rooms, because, for example, the fact that this only positive reaction is going to be, it's going to bring tax revenue to the city, it's going to bring work for people looking for work from this city, mine itself, is going to be a beautiful thing, because we've seen already what's up in Surfside, and it's one of the best hotels you can ever see. And this is very well-run, it's a build perfect, and there is no noise, there is no traffic, And this is very well-run, it's built perfect, and there is no noise, there is no traffic, they said there was going to be traffic before, and we didn't see any traffic, any increase of traffic in Surfside. We didn't, I don't think it's going to be anything negative about this, because it's only going to improve. We don't have enough hotels in the city, there's not, I don't think there's another one coming up over there, but I don't think there are enough hotels for the city, because there's going to be plenty of people coming to visit, and we don't have no place to go. And I think it can only be positive, and it's a good situation. So, I'm completely for it, and I think most people should be for it. I think that's all I have to say, this is just, I'm completely for it, that's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you, sir.
All right, any other comments? All right, if not, we're going to move on to comments from the council.
I have a question.
You have a question.
Well, I have a couple. Well...
Oh, did you?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
I wanted to hear from President Steve first, because he made a drawbreaker. Sorry.
Mr. Brown?
My name's Morris Broadd, I live at 1030 Hardy Road, Carl Gables, Florida. This is only the second time that I've come to support a redevelopment in Bay Harbor Islands. The first was P3, which involved the Continental Co-op. When that building is built, it will truly be a landmark in the community. I looked similarly at the project of the Grand Beach Hotel. I had the opportunity about a month ago to go and visit the Grand Bay, the Grand Beach Hotel in Surfside. I was tremendously impressed. I really can't add anything more than has already been said in support of this magnificent gateway project to our community. I can give you also a little history for just a moment. In 1949, my father sold this site to Albert Pick. Albert Pick was a good friend of his. Albert Pick owned 35 hotels in the Midwest, and he came to Miami Beach to retire. In order to help my father get some activity going in the island, he proposed to build a 44-room motel. My father said, no. Motel is not at the gateway entrance to this community, because it has a very bad reputation in those days. Albert Pick came back to him later and said, look, you won't permit me to call it a motel. It's too small to call it a hotel, because it only has 44 rooms. So, I'm going to call it a hoteler. And it became a hoteler for many, many years. During Albert Pick's lifetime, it was very well-maintained, beautifully maintained, because it really was a winter playground for his executives of the Albert Pick Hotel chain, and he kept his 85-foot yacht docked behind the facility. After he passed away, it went through a number of ownerships, and it seemed with every new owner, the property depreciated further, and it got to the point where it became, as you all know, a terrible eyesore at the entrance to the town. It was really shameful. Fortunately, from the ashes of the Albert Pick Hotel, a new phoenix will arise. And that will be more than a hoteler, it will be a magnificent structure. And I certainly hope that you all will favorably consider this project as it was presented. I believe these are quality people who have demonstrated that they know how to build a quality facility and to operate it. And in addition there too, it will be helpful to Kane Concourse, to the stores there, to the restaurants, and I think it's something that really deserves very serious consideration. I'm sure we're working together with members of council, this will become a reality, and it's something we can all be proud of. Thank you for the opportunity to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We have Rob Patani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. Two years ago, I came to this site, and I planned, when I came to the site, I planned something which was unheard of in Bay Harbor, and I stuck through, despite all the obstacles, I stuck through to my vision. And thanks to your support, and I think, you know, I've spoken to the principals of the Grand Hotel, and they have the equally good vision about Bay Harbor, and about how good their intentions are for the community and for the project. So, please consider them fair.
Thank you for your comments. All right, without, is there no more public comment? If not, you had a question, so...
Well, I, okay, I have a couple, but the first thing is, I would, they had mentioned that they had talked to the Seaside, and if, I know that the, if she, thank you, if you could come up so that I can at least make, I'd appreciate it.
I didn't know my services would be needed, but I'm more than happy.
Name and address.
Christine Justice, president of the Seaside Club condos, 9655 East Bay Harbor Drive.
So, in their presentation, they had mentioned that they had come over to your condominium, which is the first one that would be most impacted by this hotel, and that they got your approval and for the building of this hotel, and that they worked with you as best they can. And so, I'm curious to know...
Is it true?
It is true.
It is, it is true, and I do have a brief statement to make. We've always known that there would eventually be a building to the south of us, and I think for the last few years, we understood that it would probably be a hotel. We obviously would have preferred something a little smaller, but we have been dealing with the Bay Harbor Hotel developers ever since the inception of their involvement with this property, and we've seen their other properties and listened to their proposals. They have assured us that like their other projects, the Bay Harbor Hotel will be managed and operated in a professional responsibility and upscale manner, befitting its very important location in our town. We've had meetings with them, during which time they have tried to address our concerns and accommodate many of our requests regarding the build-out and subsequent operation of this hotel. They have pledged to us their cooperation in making the process of construction and the details of the operation of this hotel one, which will not negatively impact the Seaside Club. We did have a concern for the impact of traffic in the area, but we have been assured, as you heard earlier by Mr. Simmons, that an independent study has assured us that that will not be an issue. So, with that said, we have given our support to the project and hope that it will have a positive impact on the community and the town's residents. So, we have had all those preliminary discussions with them.
And you are not concerned about the parking? Because I know in the past, you've had problems with the Palm parking.
We have, we have had problems with the Palm. We have an agreement, a rental agreement for that portion of our guest parking, which has seemed to preclude a lot of the issues that we had previously. We are definitely concerned, you know, that we are not impacted in our individual parking area by this. And Mr. Simmons has assured us again, that should this become an issue, they will address it accordingly. So, we seem to have their cooperation and a mutual understanding, and we hope it works.
Thank you so much.
Before you sit down, Christine, Frank, is it appropriate for me to ask a question regarding remuneration? If, you know, there were actually, you know, negotiated remuneration between the developer of the site, or the owner of the site, and the Seaside?
You can ask any question you see fit. However, I'm not sure that's relevant to the decision you have, and the, as the code is before you, you have very specific items that you're looking at and decisions that you have to make. I don't see how that would be germane or relevant to any of those.
Well, it just, I guess it speaks to the idea of, you know, someone that testifies at a hearing like this, that is not being remunerated, which is kind of off the cuff and from the heart, rather than someone that comes before us and, you know, stands to lose monetarily if the project fails.
Sure. Like I said, you're free to ask any question, anyone or any party can object to it, and you can proceed.
Can I press this point with Christine?
I would like her to answer, thank you.
Okay, I'd be happy to answer.
Before they do, let me interject, I don't know the answer to it, I don't necessarily want to know the answer to it, because I have to trust whatever you're stating up here, but at the same time, we have to be careful, I think also, if it's not germane to put her or anybody in a situation where, if they do have, and I don't know if they have an agreement, if there's any confidentiality that's part of the agreement, you know, I don't want to create something where one of them violates it, where potentially, right, where they potentially have an issue, and she's not, no, but she's not here with legal counsel.
But she doesn't have to answer.
She doesn't have to answer, I want to make sure that's clear, so, and I just want you to understand this. But I'm saying, she doesn't have legal counsel here to guide her as to whether or not she has to answer or not. I just don't want to, I don't want to create a problem for the residents.
You can answer, but you don't have to answer.
It's up to you.
I actually approached, because I want to facilitate the answer rather than stop it. There is confidentiality between us. But, but that said, I'm okay with it being disclosed if Christine is able to, on behalf of the Seaside, because we have nothing to hide here. There is inconvenience associated with development, and I can tell you that it has not been easy to come to in a group with the Seaside, because, you know, they're picky people, and they've done their job, I take my hat back to them. But they have also, they've done a calculation, the first thing is, we did a survey of their building. If there's any damage to it, we repair it. Is that remuneration, or is that keeping them in the position they're in right now? It's clearly in that position. Beyond that, they're going to incur extra maintenance. They're going to have to, their pool cleaned more often, they're going to have to have their balconies washed down more often, they're going to have to have their lobby cleaned more often, they're going to have to have their glass cleaned more often, and they carried out a good faith calculation of what those additional costs will be during the course of construction, and that is the payment that we have agreed with them, nothing more, nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't intend to put you on the spot.
Wait, I haven't finished.
Oh, Lauren. You had a question.
Well, that was, well, I wanted to ask about the parking, and I wanted to ask about the dining. Those are the two questions. I want to know, how many parking spots are actually going to be on the property, and how many are going, I think there's, and why isn't, and where, then I want to ask Ron, where are you planning on parking? Because that is an issue for the town.
Yeah. Joan, can we find the parking spot? That was one of my questions. We're required to provide a total of 60 spaces, per the code. Six zero, 60 total, yes. We have 47 on-site, obviously 13 in the parking trust. Now, the previous scheme had 21 spaces in the parking trust, which for the record, there was a comment made about that. We did make the deposit, and we are current on the payments for those 21 spaces. The document shows the alternative locations. Now, there is something of a difference between, typically between what is required to be provided for parking and what's actually needed. At the rate that our guests in Surfside bring their cars, which as I already said, I think is about 43% of our guests arrive by other means of transport, that implies that 67, 57% of our guests bring cars. So, if you do the math, that would imply that with those 47 spaces, we have enough on-site car parking spaces to accommodate 85% occupation, so...
You came to this calculation on your, by your own hotel, by calculating how many, or by an outside study, or by hotels, you know, because I've stayed at your hotel, Surfside, and it is a beautiful hotel, the breakfasts are beautiful, but the, when I drive in, and the parking, and I was there until, my sister-in-law was there until yesterday, it's a very busy parking area.
So, you're talking about the east facility, the facility on the beach?
Yes.
Okay, I think a more direct comparison is the facility on the other side of the road, where I park every single day, I mean, and out of there all the time, because it's similar in a way in terms of the amenity, how many of the public we have coming and going, it's much more of a comparable type facility. At the other side of the road, we do have some meeting space, and we do have a restaurant and a bar that are open to the outside world, and that also speaks in part to why we are not intending to open the bar and the restaurant to the outside world, because it comes with an impact, and that impact is traffic generation, it's noise, it's people coming and going. We're not the Palms, the reason that there are problems with the Palms is because they have everybody turning up for dinner at the same time, and everybody leaving at the same time, and they don't have any parking. We have enough spaces on our site to accommodate 85% occupancy. We predict 75% occupancy. Yes, there will be times when it's higher, and we will be renting spaces in other locations. And no, sorry.
I'm sorry, and those spaces will be, because you have the D O's across the street who needs parking, you have the Palm that needs parking, I mean, we need to look at this.
Just so you know, any discussions we've had with them have always directed, or have any future parking exceeding their on-site, that would be on the other side of Kane Concourse and involve valet parking. So, we're talking about 95th Street or the garage itself.
At the planning zone, actually, we're talking about, first after the meetings, they talked about how much the timing it would take to get their valet parkers over to the other thing, right, and it's in there as well.
It's in their study.
Right, but they had a full discussion of it as well.
I can see the graphic up here.
Yeah, I know that the traffic study may not have looked at Garage D, but we certainly have, because as I said earlier, we've looked at this inside out, and I personally have walked from, I've walked from our site to that car park, I've taken the elevator up, and I've timed it to the top floor, and I walked up the building as well, up the five stories, whatever it is, to the top of that, and I walked back to time how long it's going to take us to walk there to deliver cars. It's a matter of staffing. As I said, 85% occupancy, we're not going to exceed it that much, but if we do, then we will staff it appropriately, so that there are not queues of people trying to get in and out of that property.
And the same, if I may just, and the employee parking? That's exactly, that's my question.
What we find with our employees, is about, it's somewhere in the low 30s in terms of the percentage of people who bring cars, and we're not going to allow any of them to park on-site.
So, they're going to park in the garage?
Or 95th Street or...
Well, we will, we will be renting spaces off-site. The calculation of how many spaces is required includes an allowance for staff, so it's in there, but we will not be putting them on-site, which will help with the issues that people are concerned about.
So, let me ask you a question. So, you're not, you're not paying for the parking, you gave them a stipend, so it's their responsibility to find a parking space, is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is that we will likely be paying, that they will be using the spaces that we are renting.
So, you're renting spaces, you're actually renting spaces.
I think we have to. Yeah, we have, we have, those parts, spaces that we were paying into the impact...
No, that's not, that's everything.
No, no, no.
It's not 21.
No, it's 13 spaces, those 13 spaces...
You're paying for the parking trust, that doesn't get you a parking space.
No, I know it doesn't, but we're also required to rent spaces, either way.
You are required.
So, we will be renting 13 spaces off-site. The 60 spaces where we are required to provide accommodates the staff.
All right. One of the concerns that I have is, you know, the same now, is the parking lot that's right here, what you would, in your, on your graph would be number, letter B.
Yeah, we won't be going anywhere near it.
Yeah. It's just not, it's the closest, but it's not feasible.
I know, the D O uses it, the Palms uses it, we will not be using it, that would be part of our standard operating procedure that we will be going nowhere near that car.
So, we're looking at either the parking lots on what would be letters C and...
Right.
But I'm guessing that you want us to park in D, which is, and I've walked both, I've walked C and D, and I know how long it takes to go both ways, depending on how you catch the lights in the sun.
Believe it or not, C might actually work out better for you, just...
Well, it does, yes, but...
Just because it's, you know, it's pretty much empty, and it would actually cause less, less traffic and confusion, particularly because we have the school adjacent to the parking garage, so, you know, that might actually even be safer, but B, you know, I just got to...
Yeah, we're prepared to be flexible, because at the end of the day, while I did walk it myself, I'm not the one who has to do it every day.
So, that, you don't mind adding that as a condition?
But we should... That we should use, not use...
That you're not going to be allowed to use Big B?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're just...
And then, I have another question, really about the dining, and I understand that it's not open to the public, and I want to know how you came to that idea, that, you know, that, that hotel in the past was used by the citizens here, and we used to walk, you know, to have, to be able to see the water, sit by the water, and have a cup of coffee or eat something, so I'm curious to know how you came to that.
There's quite a simple answer to it, it's not necessarily because we chose that we wanted to do that. You know, we run pretty simple dining and bar operations that really are aimed at our guests and not the outside world in any event, but they are open to the outside world at our hotels, the trade is limited, but they're open. The issue here is, if you go back to the PUD that was approved prior to our last approval, I believe at one point there was a scheme approved for a two-hundred-and-fifty-seat restaurant without any parking. Am I correct on that? Was that there or thereabouts? Now, now, I think we're in a different environment here, if I came to you, I mean, you've already asked a number of questions about traffic generation, you're concerned about valet parking, you're concerned about the number of onsite spaces, offsite spaces, if I came to you and said, "Well, actually, we'd like to open the restaurant up to the public, but we don't want to provide any extra parking," I'd gladly open the restaurant to the outside world, but I don't think you're going to allow me to do that in this current environment. So, without providing substantial extra parking, we cannot open that restaurant to the public, and there isn't any more parking on-site, it's as simple as that. It's the, it's the traffic generation, it's the noise, you know, it's a balancing act. We're going to upset some people by not opening the restaurant and bar to the public, but we're going to make a lot of other people much happier, the Seaside, for example, by, by them not, by them believing us when we say that they're not going to have the same issues that they experienced with the Palms Hotel.
Can I?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, I have a few comments, and then I have a few questions, so, but for the sake of the fact that this is a quasi-dedicial meeting, I'll make my comments and note that some of the comments I'll be making now are not, are not going to, let's put it this way, it's not going to impact my decision on approving or not approving a project in regards to my personal vote, but there are certain things that I, I'd be remiss, and it would be unfortunate for me not to comment, because for the last four years, I have to say that this site has been, for lack of a better term, an eyesore, and, and we've actually met before, in fact, I've, I've visited both of your, your, your other locations, in fact, I think in two thousand and one, two, sorry, two thousand and eleven, I visited your, your facility in Miami Beach, and then obviously, since then, I've had the pleasure of eating in your facility in Surfside, it's very beautiful. But, you know, some of the things that, that you told us, obviously, never happened, and, you know, one was that, obviously, that when we came together, and of course, the Church by the Sea on the original property, you know, you were going to build the site in Bay Harbor first, and then it was going to be Surfside, so it was obviously a disappointment to see Surfside's, you know, building get, get done first, and we're sitting there with a building that literally is just rotting. In fact, you know, the saying was that, you know, that building was pretty much like the rodent property. I mean, it really was an eyesore, and, and it's not right to the people in the community that had to live next to that and walk next to that, it really, it's not pleasant. I mean, I can tell you, you know, taking my kids to the beach, walking past that property was not what you would expect in, not just Bay Harbor, but you shouldn't see that in any community. It wasn't maintained, in fact, actually, I don't know if you're aware of this, I don't know if staff told you, but, I mean, for probably about, over a year, Bob Yaffe, he was our, he was the mayor prior to me, you know, every single month, there was, what's going on about that property, what's going on? I mean, it probably went on for what, a year and a half? Every single month, at this council meeting, we talked about your property, and I know that you didn't own it, but, you know, with all due respect, you came to us, you came to us to do a project, made certain concessions, certain statements, and then we didn't hear from you for four years. The people from the Seaside, I can't tell you how many phone calls, how many emails, I mean, one of the families was so disgusted, they actually sold their apartment and moved to Miami Beach, and, you know, and they're not here, because they don't live here anymore. And, you know, it's a shame, because it was a great family. You know, one of the things that, that, you know, one of the things that, that I just, you know, have to mention is, in two thousand and eleven, we talked about the structure of the building, and one of the things that was my concern was, was the building structurally sufficient to build that second level? And, you know, of course, you know, you guys presented engineer reports and said, "Of course, it's going to be fine," and it wasn't fine. And, you know, here we are now, four years later, where, you know, it had to be demolished. So, you know, and I, and I want to give you an opportunity to speak about it, because I think you should have, you know, the opportunity to say your piece, but, to be honest, the last four years, this relationship has, has not gone very well, and even though that some people may come here, who are developers, and they may get a project approved, and then turn around and sell it to someone else, the reality is, you guys came to us, and even though that it's great that it's, it's your project, you're going to put your own money, and it's a family-owned business, and you sold me four years ago, I would be remiss if I didn't say that I was strongly disappointed in the fact that you said things that never came, came to be, and rarely do people come here and do such a thing. Even if we may not like a project, you know, people have kept their word, and this is one of those examples where I personally was very disappointed, so I want to give you an opportunity to, to comment on that, because I know some of the things are, were not, were not your fault, but still, you were the guys that came to us, so please comment on that.
Let me interrupt for one second, Joan, I just want to mention one thing, I think that just before, I want to hear the answer as well, but I think whether they meant it or not, they're going to, they're going to incur a penalty, because of our recent change, they can't construct on Saturday, because they didn't get all iron faster, so they lost that day of construction.
We actually lost area as well, because you increased the side setbacks, so...
Right.
So there's that too, but I accept your disappointment in us. Just to speak specifically to the structure, it wasn't eyesore, it was in bad condition, we took it down. We put a nice fence up, we put some landscaping around it, it's still not the property you want, but we did what we could at the time. I'll give you as full and as honest answer as I possibly can to this. The history of the project for us is, is the following. We, we saw this project, this property in February two thousand and eleven, and ownership fell in love with it. I think I was told on a, on a Friday that the Church by the Sea was about to sign a lease with somebody else, they were literally about to put pen to paper, and we had to take the lease on the property ourselves. We made a very large donation to the church, and we doubled the rent that they had on the table. I then spent an entire weekend locked in a room, other than Sunday morning, because some of them are at church, negotiating the lease, and a few days later, we actually had a lease site with them. We then submitted the application for a fifty-four-room renovation of the project, and we were led into that based on certain assumptions. Now, the structure was savable, it wasn't as though it was decrepit, we could have saved it, but we were told at the time, once we'd gone through the process, and we've learned our lesson about leaving costings completely out of it until you get your approval, we were told by the time we got our approval, that the cost of the steel that would be required to put that additional story on, and to shore everything up, would be the same price as a brand-new shell for the building. So, we retrenched, we came back to you with a proposal for a brand-new building, and by the time we got through that process, it turned out that, and we realized that fifty-four rooms was just not a viable project there for us. The, the cost of construction is not a straight line. The cost of foundations for a fifty-four-room building are the same as the cost of foundations pretty much for a ninety-nine-room building. The cost of mobilizing, demobilizing the crane is the same, the cost of the swimming pool is the same. If you buy, if you build a fifty-four-room hotel, you buy fifty-four beds, ninety-nine room, that's straight line, but so many of the costs aren't straight line, and the economies of scale work so that the bigger the building, the more economic per room it is to build. So, we had to step right back from it. Also, by that time, we were right in the middle of construction in Surfside, and with the greatest of respect, which I do have for this board, you've always been, you've been very patient with us, you've always listened to us, and you've respected us, and I appreciate that, the income that we generate from the Surfside property is probably close to twenty times what we're going to generate from this property, so you can understand where our focus was at that time. But, but since then, we have spent an enormous amount of money encouraging Church by the Sea to sell us the freehold. We've spent an enormous amount of money going through three different processes, it's not cheap. We've paid into the Parking Trust, we've paid all of the costs for that hotel during this period of time. It's come at a price, and I think, more than anything, the amount of time we've spent, the amount of money we've spent, and the approach that we've taken, far from actually, you know, showing an unwillingness to build something, or that we're not going to build something, it shows the opposite, I think it shows that we are very dedicated to this, and very dedicated to building something, we could have walked away from it a long time ago, but instead, we've invested an enormous amount of money that allows us to take a proper long-term view on it, rather than the short-term view that the lease allows, and eventually, we can actually finance this project as well, if we wanted. That kind of thing is not possible with the kind of lease we have, so, you know, there is a history behind it, and I can only stand here and apologize for what's gone in the past, but there's a, there's a quote that I'm very fond of, which is that if the president tries to sit in judgment on the past, it will lose the future. Winston Churchill said that, so, you know, let's, let's try and move forward. I can only commit to you so much that we are going to put a shovel in that ground as soon as you give us the, the permission to do so, but what I can tell you is that we're not sitting around waiting for you to give us permission. We've taken, we've gone so far beyond where we are today, entirely at our risk in terms of actually preparing plans and documents and being able to go out to bid, we're ready to go on this.
Crayon appropriate. No, and I, and I just, the reason why I wanted to mention is not, like I said, it's not an impact on, we saw my decision, but I would be remiss if I, if it didn't come up, it's like the eight-hundred-pound, you know, gorilla in the room, you can't, you can't be talking about this project and not talk about the last four years, because there are people that I'm sure it rubbed around a lot.
I understand that, and I hope that I've given you something of an honest perspective on where we were, you know, may have said things that other people wouldn't have said, but that, that's, that's the truth, it's where we are, and it's where we are today.
I understand. All right. Now, I do have a few questions, so...
I just wanted to add something, Frederick Mark, owner's representative, working with Joel, and in direct contact with our owner, who's ninety-five years old, Mr. Tony Murray. I just spent the afternoon with him, he knows I'm here, and he knows the struggle that you had, and the disappointment that you had, you know, waiting for so long in order to have this building come up. Like he said, like I said, he's ninety-five years old, and the first thing that he told me when he stepped out of his plane today was, "When are we starting building the hotel in Bay Harbor?" He called it the Hotel of the Little Bridge, and, and so, "When are we starting to, to build this, this hotel?" Like Joel said a few, many times, you know, one of the things that he says, Mr. Murray always says, "I don't even buy green bananas," and the only thing that he wants now is to see this building finished, that's the only thing that keeps him alive. You know, you want to see the Miami Beach Hotel open, he saw it, you want to see the Surfside Hotel, you know, it was his priority, we're listening to what he says, and Joel and I did, but now, his focus is really on the Bay Harbor Hotel, so, speaking on, on his name, and from his own word, that's all he's striving for, is to see that hotel being built, so, just wanted to let you know that.
No, I, I appreciate that. Now, I did have a few questions, because Stephanie Bruder mentioned about the parking lot, and that was one of my questions, but, you know, like I noticed, I noticed in Miami Beach, and also in the Surfside property, the valet fees for what it costs for valet, I don't know what valet fees cost at the Daddio, but, you know, I can only surmise that for what it costs, and the Surfside property is comparable to Bow Harbor, you know, twenty, twenty-five dollars, it's somewhere in that range. My concern, my concern would be that you have people that, you know, don't park in the valet, and then they, of course, they're going to, they're going to be roaming around, again, letter B, you know, and, and that's the thing, is that that particular little quadrant is very, you know, I mean, to be quite honest, people may not know this, but the area for parking B, the annual, but the monthly pass, is actually the most expensive parking in the whole town. So, so if you actually had to go out and pay for parking, it's, it's actually almost twice as much as parking in the garage, which is covered. So, you know, my concern would be, and, and I'm, and I'm not saying that you necessarily have to have an answer to this, but what, what's your game plan, because are you going to be charging twenty-five dollars for valet, or twenty dollars for valet, and, and if somebody brings a guest, are we, you know, are we going to end up having the overflow into B, and it's, and you're going to say, "Well, it's not my fault," but, you know, you see where I'm coming from, right?
Yeah, the way that we typically price everything in our hotels is that we look at the surrounding area, and we try and, try and be a little less. So you're right, that the parking in, in Surfside is, is priced at or around the, the other hotels around.
Right.
And we have to remain competitive with those hotels. It's also the nature, I find, of, of pricing in America whereby you're going to buy a ten-dollar steak, and it's not really ten dollars, it's ten dollars plus eleven percent tax, plus twenty percent service, so, you know, why not just call it, call it what it is, and add everything into the rate, but it makes it more competitive if you do, so you have to play the game a little bit. But, the idea of, of pricing the valet is not to price people outside the park elsewhere, and that was a concern when we were going through the permitting process in Surfside. I don't recall if the question was actually raised, I think it was, but we haven't found in Surfside that people are walking at the parking rate and parking elsewhere, because I don't know what the time limits on your, your meters are, but when people are on holiday, they don't want to be running out every two hours to feed the meter, it just doesn't work like that. I think your point is, is well-made, though, and I do believe that there is going to be parking on-site to accommodate when guests come and bring friends, I think we can look after those people, because I don't think we're going to be full on-site all of the time. The best we can do is put in place some kind of standard operation procedure to encourage the guests not to park elsewhere, and we will set the rate at a point where they are not forced to park elsewhere economically. If you charge a rate of six hundred bucks a night, and you charge twenty-five dollars on top for parking, it's not such a big difference. If you're charging two hundred dollars a night, and twenty-five bucks on top, it's going to have a significant impact, so we will price it accordingly.
Yeah, no, and, and, yeah, I just, my concern was, I didn't want, you know, the parking lot on Ninety-First Street to become the, you know, like, kind of somewhat overflow, yeah.
Joan, I was going to say, actually, my concern isn't the parking lot there, my concern more is along the lines of just parking in front of off-street parking, which is free, in front of residence homes, which actually, I think, creates more importance to something Kelly had brought up a couple months ago, or three months ago, when she talked about the stickers, the decal that we're going to look at, which, oh, geez, I'm sorry, I thought it was those colors. So Stephanie brought up on a decal sticker for residents, I think we're going to have to get on the ball with that very quickly, because otherwise, you're not going to have people parking in B, you're going to have them doing it for free, right in front of someone else's home.
Exactly, I, I mean, you know, maybe people will do that, but, I mean, I can't imagine in my lifetime that I've ever gone and stayed at a hotel, and then looked to park in the surrounding residential neighborhood, because I didn't want to park my car at the hotel. I mean, part of it's, you know, convenience also, I mean, if you're going to a resort or whatever it is, I mean, you're going to park at the hotel. I mean, that's just part of, you know, the trip, and I frankly would be, you know, maybe some of the employees, you know, might try to get away with ad parking in front of, you know, residential properties, but hotel guests, I mean, I would really be shocked.
Just to make, I, I think I agree with what you're saying, to make another comment, we're all for sensible regulations, if, if this is the catalyst you need to bring in decals for your residential area, then I'm all for it. Tonight, unfortunately, I can't be in two places at once, and there's a coastal issues committee meeting in Surfside, which I really should be at tonight, where they're discussing the beach chair issue. And I tried to find a beach concession license, somebody had sold me one when we did the licensing for that hotel, but there wasn't one, so we did, we did whatever we wanted, and now they're trying to regulate it later. And I've stood up many times and said, "We are for sensible regulation," and I stand by that, so we will work with the town in any way, shape, or form, to, to limit the impact of, of the hotel, our guests, their, their visitors, et cetera.
All right, and I appreciate that, and I, obviously, I did look at this, I looked at your, your, your study, and your notes and whatnot, and, you know, I did notice in, in the, in the traffic study, I don't believe it mentioned much, I don't believe it mentioned anything about, about across the street as far as the, the valet coming in, I don't think they actually mentioned specifically about the valet for the Palm. I, I don't... I don't remember seeing that in the study, because we used to have a bigger issue with the parking, the valet parking for the Palm. It's actually gotten a lot better now than it used to be. But I think it was because they were starting to actually ticket people until cars, and so these people that eat there didn't like that. But I just wanna make sure that it doesn't kinda revert back, and then you kinda have the entrance coming onto the property. But, you know, my concern is that it's not necessarily your property, but kinda like the, you know, the straw that broke the camel back, you know, 'cause you may have a busy time with you guys, and then the Palm has, and then the daddy-o, 'cause you kinda have that little one-block quadrant, and then you have a real estate agent right next door. So, I mean, it's, I just wanna make sure that we don't have, like, a stopgap, because my biggest fear is that if you have cars literally waiting to get to the valet, or waiting to make an illegal U-turn to go to the Palm, that you're gonna end up with an accident, because what you may not know, and it doesn't really say it in the study, is a lot of the people that live on the north side of the East Island, they get home, believe it or not, by making that right on East Bay Harbor Drive. I mean, I used to live on West Bay Harbor Drive, and that's how I got home. I wouldn't drive down King Concourse to make a right, I would just turn and then go around. So my concern is that we don't end up with having, like, an accident or something, and, you know...
We've, we've worked out a plan for how we're going to staff the ramp, to make sure that we don't get cars stacking on there. What the Palms doesn't have is a ramp that they can put cars on.
Right, of course.
So the traffic report recommended a certain number of valet staff. But again, coming back to, and I hope our engineer will be the same, is coming back to fact rather than, fact rather than the study. The study allows for four cars on that ramp, because that's the way it's calculated correctly, and it has to be done that way. But I know for a fact we can actually get nine cars on that ramp. So as long as we staff it correctly, the assumptions we've made about the real number of vehicles coming and going are based in reality rather than on the study. We do not see any way that we're going to be stacking cars out, queuing out off the property. And full councillor, vice mayor, I know that you've experienced issues at our hotel in terms of waiting for valet. You know, we time it, and we know how long it takes. You often feel like you're waiting a lot longer than you are, but I'm not denying that you've waited a while. But the cars don't queue out onto the road, and that was a big concern when we were building the East property. And we make sure that we staff it accordingly, so they don't come out onto the street, and we will do the same here.
Well, would you be amenable to Mr. Miller's recommendations, where it says on number seven, the four valet, from seven to eleven, two from the other time set? If, you know, if it becomes a problem, that we could revisit that, and that it could be...
Well, I think in terms of... In terms of the number, I would far rather see as needed to prevent queuing off the property, and I'll tell you why.
Right.
Because, as I've said, the traffic study predicts four cars on the ramp, and it predicts a hundred percent of our guests bringing cars a hundred percent of the time. So I don't know that we will need four valet staff during those hours, all of the time. And I feel it would be a little unfair to expect us to have two guys standing around doing nothing, but we will certainly staff it as needed.
Well, let me, maybe, I guess the proper question is, are there any items that Mr. Miller's recommending that you do not concur and would not agree to? Because I'm assuming number seven you would not.
Yeah, if I could just interject for a quick moment. If you take a look at the ordinance that I drafted, which, which, subject to your approval and subject to any other condition, I can certainly amend it accordingly, but I did not include the requirement of four. I included the requirement, as we've had in the past, where they have to have adequate staffing. You know, in point of fact, they may need six over the holidays, and two during the summer. I don't know. And neither do they, probably, at this juncture. That's why I made sure that regardless as to whether they have two, four, six, eight, that they've gotta have enough to make sure this is functioning properly, and it's not backing up. That gives everyone the protection, I believe, that we need.
The reason why I ask this, because Mr. Miller, he's not here tonight, but Mr. Miller's...
Yes.
Oh, there you go, sorry. I'm sorry. I was here before the meeting started. Sorry, Mike. Sorry, miss. But according to Mr. Miller's recommendation, he says a minimum of four valet staff members shall be available to handle motor vehicles at the site from seven AM to eleven o'clock PM daily, with at least two valet staff members at all other times.
Yeah, I think if you look at the ordinance as I've drafted it, once again, subject to whatever conditions that you impose, I can easily change whatever I've put in. But I think it's much more protective the way I have it, because in point of fact, there could be times where they need more than four, there could be times where they need less. It's more of a standard in which we don't want...
Some of us, at least, don't have the proposed ordinance. It's not in our package.
It was part of the packet.
It is in the packet.
It had to be advertised.
Right here. I didn't see it either.
It's the last thing on your packet.
It's not the last thing in my packet. It may be online, I'm just saying, you know, hard copy, you're...
Right. Here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was one of my...
Is it?
It's pages, it's pages two-on-nine, two, two-eleven, and two-twelve, at least in the electronic packet.
Right.
So with regard to valet, it specifically says...
Where is it? In here, 'cause I don't think it's in the hard copy.
It's not in the hard copy. It's electronic, and that's, that's what it says.
Got, got me there. Okay. All right. So I guess the proper question, is there any, any items that you, that you don't concur or agree with in regards to Mr. Miller's recommendations? And he has fifteen.
I can, I can certainly answer that I'm in agreement with the conditions in Mr. Simone's draft ordinance. I mean, it might even be easier to, to run, we can run through either of them if you want, but yes, there were some...
Have you seen this?
Yes, there were some concerns, but they seem to have been addressed in the draft ordinance.
Frank, in the ordinance, 'cause some of us, including myself, haven't seen it.
For example, I think that the, Mr. Miller's report writes twenty-one off-site spaces, which could well be something that carried over from the last...
It does.
So it's not twenty-one, it's thirteen. So that's one I can remember off the top of my head.
I think we need to look at the proposed ordinance, and if the council are not satisfied with the ordinance, that's a good, you know...
That's another...
Amendments, but, you know, Michael Miller's report, you know, served as, you know, background material and assisted the county attorney and, you know, the planning and zoning board, but at this point, we need to look at the ordinance.
Yeah, too. Somebody to run downstairs, always make a couple copies.
Can we get copies of them?
I might, I might have one copy.
I can give you a copy.
Sure. Let me, let me read them to you, if I may. The approval is limited to ninety-nine hotel rooms, and the super bowl is based upon the site development plan submitted to the town on July fourteenth. All conditions set forth in the resolution are incorporated by reference. No permanent residential use is permitted. Occupancy by the same persons or same family for more than six months in one-year period. No restaurant, bar, or other commercial uses, except those serving only the hotel guests, are permitted without the prior approval of town council. No outdoor areas, including the pool area and dock, shall be used for commercial purposes without the prior approval of the town. The town manager is authorized to approve special use permits for occasional short-term events, functions, and parties after considering impacts, such as excessive noise, light, parking, and traffic. This restriction shall not prevent the ordinary use of the hotel facilities by its guests. The approval requires the transfer of TDRs for twenty-two dwelling units, which shall be approved by the town prior to the issuance. Prior to the issuance of building permits, a parking plan must be submitted to and approved by the town manager related to onsite and offsite parking for the project, both during construction and hotel operation, including the required parking trust agreement. Prior to the issuance of building permits, a unit of title document acceptable to the town attorney shall be recorded in the public records for the entire site. No individual sale of hotel rooms shall be permitted without the town's prior approval of the method, and after the review of written approval of the applicable documents by the town attorney. A denial of the sale of a hotel room by the town attorney shall be in writing, shall be based upon findings within the jurisdiction of the town's code. Regardless of potential future sales of individual hotel rooms, the applicant, future successors and assigns, shall be responsible for ensuring there is one management company for the entire site, and reporting the contact information of the management company to the town manager upon interchange to the management company. No motor vehicles shall be permitted to be parked at any time on King Concourse on East Bay Harbor Drive adjoining the site. So that is one of the conditions, that they have to have enough valet to make sure there's no backup. And that's one of the things that we were very concerned with. Upon the approval of the new PUD, all previous PUD approvals granted in the site shall be null and void. The applicant agrees to place crosswalk markings across the two driveways connection at East Bay Harbor, and to place crosswalk signs on the subject property at the northern driveway and East Bay Harbor Drive that face the site, providing warning to drivers if they are approaching through pedestrian crosswalk. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall submit and have approved by the town manager a construction staging plan, and a construction parking plan that minimizes off-site impacts. The issuance of a final certificate of use and occupancy shall be deemed as full compliance with the conditions contained therein. All conditions of the PUD shall constitute covenants running with the wind for all present and future owners and occupier of the subject property. Now, I spoke with their attorney about these conditions. I had explained them, and based upon our discussion, I made zero changes to this. They didn't ask for it either. They found it acceptable once we discussed it and talked about it. So I understand that there may be some items contained in Michael Miller's report that I haven't included verbatim, but I, you know, as a lawyer, the way we tend to draw documents, as you, as some of us know, is to make sure they're living, breathing documents that are able to be in place and for the proper use of, and the way we want the property to be, without dictating and micromanaging.
Can we go back to the hotel rooms selling?
Correct. Okay.
So explain that, so they, they can sell their hotel rooms as long as we approve for them to sell those hotel rooms?
Well, what we're saying is, we don't want you to sell it, and we're not gonna let you sell it unless we approve of it, and it's pursuant to the code. And there's no intention for them to do it or convert it. Obviously, from time to time, property owners may want to convert hotels into condos or any other thing, but, you know, this is subject to our PUD ordinance, which is...
So looking, you know, obviously, what you wrote is not in the same order that Mike wrote it, so it made it very interesting. The, correct me if I'm wrong, but you didn't specifically mention the off-site parking being thirteen spaces, so was that...
We have a, presently, what we have is a, is a parking agreement.
Right.
And they're required to do that, and it's also reflected within the resolution, which everything in the resolution is incorporated herein as well. The site plan approval resolution.
So that's okay. And then also, did you, I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't hear for number fourteen, where it said the proposed dock, both dock system, so is excluded from the approval. Was that, was that, was that in there?
Well, I have one thing with regard to the dock, is that it can't be used for commercial purposes, and quite honestly, the dock is completely separate and distinct, and not part of the site plan approval, and therefore should not be part of the PUD as well.
Yeah, 'cause I saw their, the dock, you know, their layout, and, I mean, I don't know if they're gonna get, you know, I mean...
Of course, it's a separate item.
Right. I'm just saying, I just wanna make sure that that's not...
It clearly states on the plans that it's excluded from the application, so if that's part of the, of the PUD record, then it would be automatically excluded.
Frank, my question is, I wanna try and find some happy medium here. We've talked about, for example, in the ordinance, when we looked at, thank you, the restrictions, I've read it online now, but the, when we look at the, at B, as far as the conditions, we go back to Kathleen's desire to go have a Guinness on occasional evening, or maybe noon or never. But, you know, the way it's written here, and yes, it's a breathing document, but at the same time, we have to find some way to have this operate so that it protects the residents, but at the same time allows the residents to be able to go in, let's say, you know, it's not unusual for people to say, you know, let's, I'll meet for a business partner for a cup of coffee in the lobby of the hotel, to sit down and discuss something. It's a good meeting place, you have one person meeting and one person not. The idea that they're gonna be violating the ordinance, they serve a cup of coffee to a resident, I've got a problem with that. But at the same time, we don't wanna create, and I understand the reasoning, and I understand that, you know, the whole problem, you know, if you start doing a full, open restaurant, that's a whole different thing for parking, it's a whole different thing for delivery trucks. I don't wanna create the noise for next door, but we wanna make sure there is an allowance. Let's say, you know, for example, you know, I see Christine back there still behind, you know, she doesn't want, I'm sure, a restaurant next door, but at the same time, if you want someone that's coming in town, and you wanna go downstairs and have a cup of cappuccino next door, you know, you should have the ability to do that. That's not gonna interfere with, in fact, that's an improvement on what you have now, in the ability to have that next door and have that, but under this, they can't even serve her that. So I wanna see if there's some happy medium we can work out here.
Sure. What about the, what about the following language? No restaurant, bar, or other commercial uses, except those serving only the hotel, comma, hotel guests, comma, and their invitees are permitted without the prior approval. Doesn't that...
No, it doesn't.
Hotel guests and invitees.
No, no, the hotel, the hotel guests...
And the hotel's invitees.
...and invitees. Meaning that you can't just show up and go, you have to be allowed in.
For a full restaurant. We can put, I think, as a limitation, because at the same time, illegally, that can open up, that can open up the door for a full-size restaurant, coffee bar, all kinds of, I mean, I just, I wanna, I just don't wanna create a scenario...
Mr. Timmons, what, how do you look at this? I mean, standing here right now, how do you look at this in terms of, I mean, if I were to walk in, I forget that I'm a member of the council, if any residents or anybody walked in who is not staying in the hotel, would you have your, you know, people at the door say, you know, "Sir, are you, are you a guest, or why are you coming in here? You know, we can't serve you." I mean, is that, what's the plan to comply with your...
Well, my only answer in this forum possibly can be that that restaurant and bar is only open to guests of the hotel.
So if I were to walk in and sit at the, at the bar, then the bartender or the server would say, "Are you a resident, or you're a guest of the hotel?" And if I answered, "No," then he would, he or she would tell me that he can't serve me, or that they can't serve me. Is that correct?
Well, it's fairly simple to police if everything has to be room charge.
Right, I understand that.
But that's what we're trying to, we're trying to event that.
How about if you're, you know, you can prove you're a resident of the town?
No, it's, I still don't, see, I mean, no, nobody wants, like I said, and this is hard to draft, and that's what, you know, that's the issue here. Nobody wants to create a scenario where we're having a full restaurant, a full bar, or anything else. That's not what's the desire is here. But it's not uncommon for two people to say, "Look, you know what, let's have a business meal, or we'll just have to meet a friend or something like that for a cup of coffee. Oh, by the way, let's go shopping in King Concourse, and then let's just sit in the, sit and have a drink afterwards." And I think that's the desire we have. We don't wanna create anything beyond that, but we wanna allow for that possibility.
Yeah, and I have a question. Sure. I mean, we've, it's already nine o'clock.
Yep.
You know, almost nine o'clock, and we really haven't talked about the project itself. I mean, we talked about, you know, the parking study, we've talked about the restaurant, but we haven't talked about, we haven't spoken about, you know, the structure, the number of rooms, the, you know, the density, the intensity, the layout, the, you know, public access. I mean, there's a million things that we have not talked about this project, and we're talking about what is, in my opinion, such minute operational details, that, you know, we haven't, you know, we haven't talked about, you know, the main course, and we're already finishing dessert, so...
You know, you may be correct, Isaac, but we're gonna be asked to vote on first reading of the ordinance, and there are a lot of questions that all of us have, and everything that you've talked about is very important.
Honestly, before I even, you know, develop, you know, an opinion on, you know, whether the parking is right, or whether the restaurant should be open to the public or not, you know, I wanna know if this council will approve this project, you know, the way it's submitted, the way it's submitted, not that I support it or not, but, you know, I, we, you know, because we're, you know, I think, I thought that's where the, you know, the dialogue was going to go, talking about the intensity and the density of this project, whether it's compatible, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know.
Isn't that all part of the impact? You want to know the impact on the community, just like traffic, which I'm waiting to discuss at length.
Hold on, hold on.
But we didn't get a chance to say anything in your own, in your ordinance. None of us.
All part of the impact, we are on the ordinance, that's what we're talking about.
You're on the ordinance at this point, but we haven't said our opinion of this project to begin with.
I haven't either, I mean, we.
Well, I mean, I'm personally, I'm, I'm against the project.
Okay. You'll have the opportunity to speak, I'm sure the mayor will, will give each of us the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, we're still, we're still working over there, and, I mean, let's put it this way, we can do two things, we can, we can either, you know, go and have everyone have an equal opportunity to ask any questions and any concerns that they have, and to speak, obviously, or we can stop what we're doing now, and we can at least get, at least an idea if there's a consensus to at least move forward with, with the project, I mean, if, if the majority of the council doesn't, isn't going to vote for it, it's kind of a moot point to even talking about it. So, you know, what, what is the will of, of us, you know, do you want to get an idea if, if we got at least a consensus to move forward, or, or if that's the smart move?
When you're ready, I have a comment.
What's, what's your opinion on A and B?
I just want to say, out of respect for all the work that you've put in, I think it's recognized, the quality of the other projects, I have been there, you know, we appreciate what you're trying to do here. My biggest concern is the impact on the community, mostly the traffic. I live a block and a half north, I see what happens when the postal carrier or one Cisco truck stops, and it puts the brakes on everything going over the bridge. And unlike a project that we have coming on the other side that's similar in size, 98, 99 rooms, it's a hill, so it's very dangerous, you know, people, you come up, you come down, I, I think it's hazardous, and that's really what I've clued in on, it seems like everybody's kind of chosen some, some worried about the parking. I'm concerned about the number of rooms, I'm not opposed at all to your operation, I think your standards are lovely, I'm uncomfortable with that number of rooms, and I'm not inclined to vote for 99 rooms. I'm, I'm also looking, trying to crunch the numbers to see if you're amenable to reducing the amount of rooms that maybe will allow you to hold all of the parking onsite, so that'll put an end to that argument. Perhaps 80 rooms, it seems to be like a 60% ratio, so if you had 80 rooms, that might satisfy your parking, I don't know if that's feasible in your business plan.
The, hold on, hold on a second, what I asked was, if, if, is the will of the council to continue with the discussion so we can have everyone have an equal opportunity, or we should do kind of a quick round robin to see if we have a consensus to even move forward? So, let's, let's do B, let's just do that.
That's my statement, is at 99 rooms, I'm not inclined to go forward.
To, to no, Isaac, do you want?
You know, I.
It's a good idea, by the way.
You know, I really want to echo the sentiments that you talked about in your opening comments, I mean.
Please.
You know, I, I was there also, and I was mayor, you know, before, yeah, he was mayor, discussing with Mr. Simmons, the, the condition and the disposition of, of the project, and I suffered through it, you know, during, you know, during all those years, and I really have a hard time, you know, believing anything that Mr. Simmons presents here. You know, and also what Kelly says, you know, I, you know, at, at a 54 hotel room development, I was on board, I was the biggest cheerleader. At 99, I ain't that anymore. I'm kind of an opponent of this, and, you know, I think, you know, you, you came back with exactly what I imagine you'd come back with, and I'm against it.
Don't play. Josh?
I don't have a problem with the size of the building, I'm going to be against everybody, everybody on that side. My thought process is, I understand the economics of the hotel, I understand that you'd have, there is an economy of scale here. We've been asked, at least I've been asked by citizens for years, even before I got on the council, what can we do to improve Kane Concourse? And I think the easiest answer is a hotel on either end, that creates a lot of pedestrian traffic, I think we'll have people in and out of the stores, in and out of the restaurants, it'll bring in more business there. This is our shot to revitalize Kane Concourse. I think if we don't do this, my thought process is, I don't think it's being built at a smaller level, and I don't believe if we have it there, that we have any idea what's going to be built on that property. Something has to be built there, I mean, it's not going to sit there indefinitely, but I don't see how the economics work for anybody else to do something that we have, that we like, that will help Kane Concourse, unless we accept it at the 99. I'm in favor of the project.
All right, Bob?
You know, I think Ron can tell you that I complained daily, probably about the, the, you know, condition of the site, but with that said, I don't see the utility in berating you or anybody else about, you know, the, the history, because that doesn't, I don't have credibility issue because the place was a mess for X number of years, so I'm just going to put that aside. I have had the opportunity to tour the Surfside Hotel, it's impressive, you know, I haven't been there that often, so I can't say that I, you know, have personal knowledge of the way it's operated, but it, it seems to be operated very nicely. When I was the mayor, I went to a couple of mayor's meetings there, and so, you know, I did have the opportunity, you know, to, to tour and see hotel rooms, and see a lot of aspects of the project, and I was very impressed with it. You know, I, you know, I've gone to a couple of other meetings, you know, over, over the years, you know, about this project. Initially, when, you know, we have a gateway district because I asked for a gateway district, and I will tell you that it was not Michael Miller, I always hold this against you, I'm sorry, but, you know, you came back from, you know, talking to developers with a gateway that I never imagined, but, you know, I've, I realize that I'm beating a dead horse or whatever it is at this point, so I'm not going to object, I've decided to no longer object to the size of buildings in the gateway district because it's, that's pointless. You know, the, the ordinance allows for six, seven-story building, and so I'm no longer objecting to six or seven-story buildings in the gateway. So I'm inclined to vote for it, because I've watched the progression of the, of the project, I thought your, the initial project that you came forward with many years ago, you know, the smaller hotel, even before you were knocking down the existing structure, I thought was beautiful, and was great, and I was really impressed with it, but I understand the reasons for, you know, having purchased the property, and looking at the different, the economics of it, you know, looking for a larger project. I think that we need a, you know, an impressive signature building on that property, it is the gateway, it is an entrance into the town, I think it will be economically beneficial to our shops, our restaurants, to Kane Concourse, to the town, so at, at this point, I'm inclined to vote yes.
Stephanie?
So I, obviously, I've stayed at your facility, and you love it, and we think it's a, a well-run operation. I think it's a balance of what the business owners need and what the residents need, and I would love to see your hotel built, but not at 99 rooms. If you would like to reduce it somewhat so that the impact, the parking won't be on the facility, there will be, you know, I think that that's something, and we can work out the other little logistics, then I'm inclined for it, but if it stands at 99, I can't do that. Thank you.
So, you have your, you have your answer.
Okay. So, Frank?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry?
Can I get a turn?
Well, can I, can I, yeah. I'm going to interject now, because the whole point of this exercise was to determine whether there were at least four votes, that we're inclined to vote for this project, and we've now heard that there are four people who, as it stands at 99 rooms, will vote against it, so I'm not sure that we need to continue this meeting this evening.
We're going to end the meeting.
If that's what the consensus is.
You can get to say what you want.
No, nobody said it. No, Doris, say it.
Why can't I just vote against the project?
Oh, hold on. Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, with all due respect, you know, we have another meeting, we have a regular council meeting immediately after this.
Well, then maybe you should have shortened what you said. Okay, give me one minute.
Absolutely, let him know.
Okay, we're gonna talk.
Well, you know what, Doris?
Please.
You have the floor, Doris, go ahead.
The only thing, I, I think that you probably run a very good hotel, and I would really like to see you come into the town with this development.
Speak into the mic, please.
To B, and I agree, cut it down, try and move the entranceway away from Kane Concourse. My biggest problem is Kane Concourse, on that turn off of Kane Concourse onto East Bay Harbor Drive, that's going to back up. I don't care how many valet you have, and how far they have to run, and how many cars are coming out of that garage and are stuck because people haven't gotten their cars or picked up their cars, there's going to be a problem there, and it's going to move out onto Kane Concourse, by the bridge. That's my biggest problem, is the traffic jam there. I'm sure you're going to do a nice job.
All right. Frank, I'm assuming the, the proper thing is to, to give them an opportunity to, to withdraw the, the project, and, and, because I would assume they would need to resubmit.
Excuse me, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Ethan Kazdin, representing the applicant. Another alternative, we've gotten, I think, mixed feedback from the council, but some direction clearly. I think another thing that can be done would be to defer consideration, to let us consider what we've heard here tonight, the first time we've gotten all this input from all of you, and then come back again, and let you know what, what if anything, we might be willing to do, to accommodate it, or maybe that would not work, but I think deferral, I think, would be appropriate.
That's fine. All right, can we get a, a motion?
Can I just make a couple of comments?
Please.
Bearing in mind what's been said, the two biggest issues here seem to be the, the number of rooms and the, and the parking, the traffic. We've had a third-party traffic study done. I, I'm not a traffic engineer, all I can do is tell you about what we experienced at our hotels, which I reported diligently, to the best of my abilities, and in the most logical way. But the fact is, we have a traffic report that shows that there are not going to be any negative impacts from this project. So, I, I don't necessarily understand how you can just throw that out the window and say that it's not true, we all have to rely on professional reports. That's one thing on the parking. In terms of the number of rooms, you know, the, the alternative here is that, I mean, we are not going to build a 54-room scheme here, it just doesn't work. The, the cost per room is just way too high for the reasons that I've already explained, added to which, the income generation potential from that 54-room scheme further compounds the problem. We've settled at 99 rooms, but the real sweet spot is 150, and that's based on the way that the staffing model works out, so we've already cut down the profit potential of this building considerably to keep the rooms under 100. I know that profit, income, it's not really your concern, but what is your concern is having a property built here, and the alternative is perhaps another condo scheme, that I can tell you is going to be bigger than we've built, because condos can max out much more on the, the available area that can be built, because they don't need bigger big pools, they don't need amenity decks, they don't need nice, nice entrances, they don't have restaurants on the ground floor that take up, up space, you're going to get something bigger there. And the impact of another condo in this town is probably not something you really want. It's, it's a toss-up between a building that is bigger, that is probably going to create more impact, or something that contains, I believe, 99 rooms, there or thereabouts. And also, you, you make assumptions about, about what this is going to mean, and to say, we have a professional traffic report there, we have operating buildings that are the same size, and frankly, you're only not even going to notice that it's there. I say that, you're not going to believe me, but it, it's the truth, so, you know, you have to look at what we're proposing, really, what it means for the town, and what it really means for traffic generation. You know, we've gone to a lot of lengths in terms of planning this building, yet we can't get a semi on the, on the property, but we've already spoken to all of our suppliers, to see which ones can actually deliver in box trucks. We already have deliveries across the street at the Palms, there's no reason why, we, I'm sure we use the same suppliers, and no reason why they can't be doubling up in terms of deliveries, if that's necessary, there, there are ways of ameliorating this. We want to bring a, a nice building to the town, and we run hotels, and to do it, we need a certain minimum number of rooms, both operationally and to justify the cost of construction. So, that's really all I can say to those points, and I hope you'll give it some, some further consideration, and I hope Councilmember Salva that, you know, I can, I can prove to you that, that we're going to do what we say we're going to do, but you need to give us the chance to, because if you say no to this, then I suppose the question is, what's the alternative, what else is going to happen, and what's really going to be built there? And when is it going to be built? So, this is your chance to actually have something built there. As I say, you might not believe me, you might say you've heard this before, but what's going to happen if you say no? Thank you.
Can I just make one other comment?
Yeah, please.
Because I just, I mean, in terms of the believability issue, and it's not coming from me.
Of course.
I did have a, a lengthy conversation with Daniel Dyke, who's the mayor of Surfside. You know, and you went through a number of years of building in Surfside, and he just called me to tell me that he thought that the, this organization was very easy to work with, very accommodating, that they did what they said they would do, and, you know, and that really they're, you know, a pleasure to have in their community, but, you know, again, I don't have a personal relationship with Mr. Simmons, I don't know him, so I can't.
You know, Bob, you know, that's, that's great, I mean, you know, Mr. Simmons was here in the middle of 2011, saying, I'm going to build a 54-room hotel, and he even pulled a permit to do it.
I understand that, like I said, I understand.
And that never happened, then he came back and just built pretty much, you know, very close to the, to the maximum that he can build, which I knew was going to happen.
I have a quick comment, Mr. Mayor, relevant, a little different. We only have four gateway properties, so Monarch is done, the other side is small, we, we might have the other East Bay Harbor Drive one come. It seems to me like this process is a little backwards, that maybe the council should hear the concept of the PUD before they go to the trouble of planning and going before P and Z and all of that, and, you know, I apologize for that, because I did attend the P and Z meeting, and I know that there's a lot of work that's gone to that, and a lot of money, and a lot of time, so I don't know if that's something that we can do, if that's feasible, but just from a logistical standpoint, maybe we can have some kind of a predetermination hearing before we put a developer and a companion or through this process, I apologize to you for that.
So, can we get a motion to defer, is that?
I make a motion that we defer.
Okay, second, second, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, everyone, I just have it. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.